Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the Norwood Planning Board. We are here live at the senior center and online. I believe the only agenda item this evening is a continued public hearing regarding a proposed zoning amendment regarding accessory dwelling units or ADUs that was discussed at our last meeting, and we are resuming the discussion today. So with that, Sarah, did you want to lead us into it?
Yeah, I can kick this off. So at the last convening of this public hearing, which was last Monday, the board continued to deliberate, and they heard comments from members of the public that were compelling, and the board felt that they wanted some kind of further review. So at the board's direction, Holly and I have spent the last week kind of researching both code requirements and also kind of case law best practices, options for the board on the ADU bylaw in ways that might address some of those concerns. We've held meetings with the building commissioner, Gary Pelletier, to obtain his recommendations. And I was able to meet with the chair on Friday with Gary to review some proposed changes that may seek to address some of those concerns that the board members seem to have in response to what the public commented on. So I have a copy of those recommendations here. Debbie, I believe those were sent to you today by Lynn, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just kind of go through this document and kind of outline the changes that I'm recommending?
Sure.
Okay. So if you look on this, you'll see each of the changes are on the right-hand side. These are the specific edits that were made. Much of the changes that you see are kind of like, kind of stylistic or phrasing changes that had been recommended by both Ms. Churchill and Attorney Hearn. So those are, you know, minor edits. It's important to note, this was reviewed by council before, and this has been reviewed by council as well. Council was okay with the version before, but I do think that some of these proposed changes make it a little bit more understandable, so I incorporated those. The significant changes here kind of get to the question of how to determine that the ADU really is accessory to the primary dwelling. What about an ADU sets it apart from just an extra whole dwelling unit, making a single family, a two-family, or a two-family into a three-family? And while there are some design changes that were already in this as proposed, the recommendations that I'd like to suggest kind of tighten up that definition. So I'd like to recommend that you consider reducing the maximum allowable size of the ADU currently as written under the warrant. It's half of the gross floor area of the primary dwelling unit, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. And I'd like to suggest that that be further reduced to 750 feet instead of 900 feet. I think what we heard was some concern that the ADU may have, you know, more bedrooms than perhaps the board or residents that spoke are comfortable with. And although you can't necessarily regulate the number of bedrooms in the ADU, you can restrict the square footage to a size that you're a little bit more comfortable with. Note that the provision that allows for special permit review of dimensional requirements still exists. So if there was a certain homeowner that had, you know, a unique home layout, or, you know, perhaps lots of land, or the primary dwelling unit was so large that 750 square feet would be, you know, not nearly close to that same scale, they'd still have the opportunity to come before the ZBA and have more individualized review of their actual proposal in open session with no butters. So that avenue still exists, but the byright authority would limit this to 750 feet at the most. The other change that we discussed, and this was something that the building commissioner also recommended, was regarding access. So as written on the warrant, an ADU must have at least two means of egress. One needed to be independent to the exterior of the structure, to some sort of like shared communal space, like a hallway. And the other one, as written, could be through the primary dwelling unit, but didn't have to be. What's before you is a proposal to require that there be some sort of shared access in between the primary dwelling unit and the ADU. This, I think, ensures that it, an ADU more closely meets, and I'll let, you know, Gary kind of speak to this a little bit better, it's tidier enforcement for him, I think. He considers an ADU as a dwelling unit within a dwelling unit, and the shared access makes it a little bit easier to enforce. But to the extent that owner occupancy isn't a practical measure, having that shared access does create a more intimate style of housing, a unit that is more accessory to the primary dwelling unit, and something that we think would be appropriate. So those are the two biggest changes that you see before you. The requirement that any additional parking be made out of pervious surfaces was removed just to make it a little bit more user-friendly for the part of the applicant, and a little bit more enforceable. The requirements for design standards relating to the doors is the same. They have to be on the side or the rear of the structure. And the last restriction, again, relating to special permit, special permits not being able to restrict or require ownership or family relations, has been reworded to be a little bit clearer and more enforceable, but still stands. I'd like to ask through you, Mr. Chair, that we ask our building commissioner to speak up. I know that there was some question about whether or not it was, you know, something that we even could do in restricting the number of bedrooms within these ADUs. And Gary does have an opinion on that, that I think would be helpful for the board to hear.
Sure. Good evening, Gary.
How are you doing? You guys can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things in 48 that speak to not regulating things that are already regulated by the state building code. That was one of the points that I made. And also, section three of 48, which exempts the interior area of a single-family home from being regulated by zoning. So I think those two items right off the bat jump out to me that, you know, the board and the bylaw should be very careful not to restrict things like bedroom count. The ADU as, because it meets the definition of a dwelling by having, you know, a set of housekeeping or housekeeping arrangement with bedroom, bathroom, kitchen, cooking facilities in order to not be considered a two-family by being attached to another dwelling unit, that the accessibility piece of it, or making it ancillary to one, or as Sarah put it, and I did comment, that it really has to be a dwelling unit within a dwelling unit. So it's just another area of a single-family home that happens to have those three things, sleeping, bathing, and cooking facilities, that are separated in a way, but not completely separated the way that we would separate dwelling units under one roof as a two-family, which would be complete separation. Does that make sense?
Yes. Joe?
I just have a question. How many different options would you have? I noticed that you'd have to have one egress that is by itself, that they're not sharing, is that correct? At least one?
One has to be outside.
One has to be.
And that's the other thing. The building code requires that each dwelling unit or each dwelling have two means of egress, a primary and a secondary. The primary has to be of a certain size. It has to be side-hinged, and it has to open directly into a yard or court. The second means of egress can be smaller. It can be a slider or a hinged door. It can be through, travel, for instance, through a garage, but only if the garage opens directly out to a yard or court. So, again, to maintain an option where, number one, the accessory dwelling unit is truly accessory to a unit, ancillary to that unit, they should be connected. But it can be configured in a number of different ways, depending on the size of the house. So I'll give you an example. If you just have a plain old, you know, small ranch, one-story ranch house with a main front door and a back door, and you would put an addition on it for an ADU, that ADU could have an exterior door in the back, provided it's still connected to the main house, again, through either a hallway or an interior door that's unlocked. Those two means of egress could actually serve both dwelling units, if you follow me. The primary, for the front house, can have a front door and still use the back door, which is part of the ADU, and vice versa.
And so, Gary, just as far as the--
Does that make sense?
Yes, but as far as the interior door is concerned, you mentioned, I think you just used the term unlocked. Is there any particular requirement that you would envision that, as to whether the doors should be lockable or from which side?
If it's part of one of the means of egress for either or the ADU or the primary dwelling unit, then it can't be restricted. It can't be locked.
From what side?
It can't require special knowledge, tools, or, you know, this is one of the reasons, if you've ever seen one of the old locks on, the old front door deadbolt sometimes would have a key on the inside, that's completely illegal. You can't do that anymore. It has to be, anyone with any level of knowledge would have to be able to open that door to egress in the direction that they need to travel.
Joe?
Yeah, all the things I'm thinking about here is all the different ways that it can be done and how it, what ways it may not be done. So you have the main house, and he's got a front egress, and then he's got a back, and they're going to connect somehow. Would that be so that they could have somewhere where they could meet in a hallway and then come out of the same egress or entrance or exit?
It could be.
Like a breezeway or something?
Depends on what they want.
Okay.
There could be four doors, you know, two doors per each unit that lead outside. That would be fine. But you'd still have to have, you can't have full separation, can't have a solid wall that's unaccessible between the two units.
They have to be attached by a 12-foot wall.
I knew that they had to be attached by a 12-foot wall, but I didn't know if they, if you had to have a doorway there or not. At first, I was led to believe no, but now you do.
Yeah, there's two different things. They have to have a common wall of at least 12 feet, but in that 12 feet, there needs to be access between the two units. Because that's what makes them, that makes one accessory to the other.
So they have to be a little cozier than a normal two-family, perhaps?
Well, yeah, again, a two-family has a fire-rated separation between dwelling units, and they don't communicate enough, they're not necessarily, other than maybe a shared common entrance, but then those are going to have completely separate entrances. That's a two-family. That's not the intent of this. The intent of the ADU is to make it accessory and ancillary to one of the units, or, you know, the only unit if it's a single-family.
Okay, so it would vary from your average two-family in that way?
Absolutely, yeah. And that's by design.
One of the things that Gary and I had discussed last week was about kind of process, and I think to your point, there are lots of different configurations that someone might be able to design an ADU within the existing structure. And my question was, how much of this, you know, access and locks and should we address in the bylaw? And Gary's, you know, recommendation was not much, other than saying there has to be this shared access, because in the course of building permit review, Gary reviews and applies heavy scrutiny to make sure that the egress requirements of the building code are met. So he has the ability to make the determination on a case-by-case basis, okay, primary dwelling unit needs to exit this way, so it can't be a lock on this side of the door, or that side of the door. Like, he's the one who reviews the individual kind of proposal itself and makes that call. So there still is a check built into the process to make sure that the egress is there and that it's safe, but we don't necessarily need to over-restrict or kind of get involved in the code requirement part of that. Is that an accurate kind of interpretation of our conversation, Gary?
Very, very accurate, yes. There's a lot of different things. Again, as I mentioned, the types and sizes of egress, the number of egresses, emergency escape and rescue openings in bedrooms, all of those things would be scrutinized during the permit review process for the renovation ship. Depending on what kind it is, it could be a second floor, it could be a basement renovation with an ADU, it could be an addition off the rear or side or what have you. So those are all going to be case by case, and it's not only reviewed in permitting, but it would be, then it's checked for compliance upon final inspection. And generally, I will include certain language in the certificate of occupancy, and in this case, it would require, in a certain instance, it would require that the common door between the ADU and the single-family remain accessible and unlocked in certain circumstances.
Mr.--
Debbie?
So it sounds like you're going to require this door. How do you enforce that, other than when you get the CO?
Well, we enforce it on the plans, we enforce it in the inspections, and we would, you know, enforce it as part of the certificate of occupancy. The same way I enforce any code. I mean, I can't kick the door down and make sure that somebody's not, you know, illegally renting their basement as an apartment, but there's, when we do, when we are made aware of it, then we can enforce it.
I understand, I mean, I appreciate that, I understand that. I just, a lot of the questions I've been asking for the last so many months is, well, that's not enforceable. And I understand, some of these are difficult, but, okay. I'll move on, Sarah?
Joe?
I--
I'm sorry, if you've been waiting.
Sure. Hey, Gary, I got a question regarding emergency egress. Is a window in the bedroom required for emergency egress in this ADU?
Any bedroom, any sleeping room is required to have an emergency escape and rescue opening, and that can either be a window, or it can be a door.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
All right. Joe?
And I just, I noticed that we knocked this down from 900 square feet to 750 square feet, and just compared to the last time we were, the discussion got off into bedrooms, but just what can fit in that kind of space? And of course, you need your bathroom, and you need your kitchen, and a living area. And I was just curious as to, would this limit the number of bedrooms per se, or, in your opinion? Because we started talking about three, and then someone said four, and then it got a little out there, and I think that's a bit much, and I don't think they would be able to do that many. I was kind of surprised when it came out in the discussion. So I was just curious if you had any thoughts on that?
Well, I do. I think, I think the reduction in size is appropriate. I think that goes to limiting exactly how many functional rooms, especially bedrooms, because again, you've got to put, even if it's a one-bedroom type ADU, you think about, you know, even a studio or a one-bedroom apartment, you're looking at around 600, 700 square feet. You've got to put a kitchen and a living area, you've got to put a bathroom, and even a small bedroom is going to be 12 by 12 with a closet. So you're going to eat up that 700 square feet pretty quick. Could you fit two bedrooms in there? Sure. And I don't think it's, I think there may be instances where it's appropriate to have two bedrooms, depending on who is going to be using the unit, whether it's siblings or a parent and a child, or, you know, a single parent and a child, or whatever the situation is. But it certainly eliminates, in my opinion, and again, we would see it on the plans, you know, you having, you know, three or four bedrooms and a galley kitchen, that's likely not, and a bathroom, that's likely not going to happen at 700, 750 square feet.
Thanks on that. Also, some people talk about having an extra room where you might, instead of having, using it as a bedroom, you might have an office or something. So that's just another--
That's something we scrutinize. Again, I require any plans that are submitted to me to have room names on them, and the building permit is issued predicated on the plans. So somebody might call something an office. They can call it whatever they want, but if it's a room of privacy, I consider it a sleeping room, as does the sanitary code. So just because we're mostly on sewer here, I've worked in a couple towns that are mostly on septic, and built-in towns that are on septic, and if you have a room of privacy, it's considered a sleeping room. So in that case, I would require it to be treated, whether it's used as an office or not, it could be used as a sleeping room, and it would be required to have a smoke detector in it, emergency escape and rescue opening. So that's, we wouldn't have somebody with four, you know, four offices and a bedroom.
So Gary, I have a question. It's come up in a couple different avenues, through a few members of the board, and public and interested parties, about design standards and the compatibility from aesthetic as to this ADU as opposed to the primary residence. Can you speak to what the current lay of the land is with a regular addition, and how anything different could or could not be applied here?
Again, I'm going to go back to 48, section three. No zoning requirements of bylaw shall require or restrict the use of materials or methods of construction or of structures regulated by the state building code. So unless there is a specific design standard adopted, like for instance, through historical district commission, as we had in Medfield, which did have some way, did have some jurisdiction over design, we can't tell someone how to build, you know, outside their house, or color it, paint it, or what shape it should be. If it meets the zoning for area and setbacks, and it's compliant with our ADU bylaw, then it's by right. Whether we think it looks good or not is not within our purview, I don't believe.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Do you have any follow-up?
Mr. Chairman, just, Gary, I just want to thank you for meeting with us Friday. As you know, Mr. Chairman, I had a lot of questions at the last meeting about this bylaw, and I think the meeting Friday with Gary was extremely productive. I brought out all my concerns and concerns that I've heard from other people. We hashed, we went through it, you were there. I think we played out a lot of different scenarios, devil's advocate questions, the what-ifs, and I'm, I feel very comfortable now. Gary is very, I believe, is very comfortable with this bylaw, and I think the changes we made, I think the made one, reducing it to 750, will clear up a lot of the questions we had over size and things like that. And Gary, as he is tonight, answering a lot of those questions that people had. So I feel a lot, I'm a lot more comfortable with this bylaw as it stands tonight than I was a week ago. So thank you, Gary, again, and Sarah and your team for having us Friday.
Great. Still a public meeting, so are there any members of the group here or online that wish to comment?
I do have extra copies of the--
Sure. Thank you. You ready?
I haven't seen it bylaw.
Need a copy to refer to?
Any correspondence on the matter that I submitted to the office last week?
Did, saw that today.
I have a couple of questions that I made, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
For the record, David, I'm here to give a name for a place, speaking as a resident of the town, not representing anybody. With respect to the question of egress that we heard from Mr. Pelletier about it, I'm just wondering, in order to understand this better, let's say you have an existing single-family house that has three or more egress points. My house has five egress points. And let's say you build or create an ADU. So the ADU will have one direct egress to the outside.
A minimum of one, yes.
And they could have a way into the main house. The main house, meanwhile, has at least, say, three means of egress that are untouched by the creation of the ADU. Can that connection between the house and the ADU be locked from the ADU side so that the ADU resident has two ways of egress in the event of emergency, the one that goes directly out, or to go through the house, while the occupants of the house have three or more egresses untouched by the ADU? I wonder if Mr. Pelletier could clarify that?
Sure.
Yeah, in that case, yes. The ADU, the main house has, I'm going to say that generally, because I don't know your house, David, but one of the other requirements of egress, like I said, there's a primary and secondary. They are also supposed to be as remote as possible. So you can't have a mudroom door, six feet from your front door, and call it a second means of egress. It's really not remote enough. But that being said, provided that the ADU has one door that's side-hinged and exits directly to the outside, that would be its primary means of egress. Its second means of egress can be through the main dwelling unit, provided it's not obstructed, which, as long as, if there's a lock on the door that the occupants of the ADU can readily open to access their egress, and it's not blocked or obstructed, then yes, that would be allowed.
Okay, thank you. Because I can think of people who might be renting an ADU and want to be able to keep the place locked, but still have egress.
If they're renting it, it could be, you know, an adult sibling or child, or just somebody they want to have some level of privacy from.
The tenants. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, whoever is living there.
Whoever's on mine, yeah.
Beyond that, again, not having seen this, is this, does this limit occupancy to, of one of the units, or require, rather, occupancy of one of the units to be an owner?
No.
No? I mean, have we looked at what the towns around us have done? Sharon? Sharon requires that one of the units shall be occupied by an owner of the property.
We've looked into this.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. But you're not requiring it, and yet we're doing this completely different from how our neighbors are doing it and have done it. Sharon requires that the owner of the property occupy one of the units. Dedham limits the size as low as 350 square feet, no greater than 1,000 square feet, subject to 33% of the total building size. They don't have a statement that I see about occupants, I'm sorry. It's accessory, I'm sorry. They do require the owner of the lot on which the dwelling unit is located must live in it. In Walt, Westwood, the owner of the premises shall occupy either the principal dwelling or the ADU. In Walpole, the property, I don't believe there's, I don't see that there, but the accessory unit can only be occupied by individuals within the third degree of kinship of the owner. So there is a family connection required there. And so our neighbors around us all require the owner or the owner's family have a connection with the occupancy of the property. We're proposing as a matter of right that somebody with no ownership occupy both of the proposed units if it's a single family. And I wonder if that's a good idea because it leaves things open to a little less control than you'd have if an owner were directly on the premises on a regular basis. That's one question I, or one observation. I did send a memo to the planning department Friday. I don't know which of the members saw it.
I did see that.
I understood Mr. Hatchey and Mr. Pachakowski were at him going to a meeting and so I submitted, in anticipation of that meeting, I submitted comments. I have copies of the others that are interested in them. And again, I would, I recommend it, or I'm arguing rather, for ADUs to be limited to the single-family districts and single-family dwellings. We have two families, we have three families throughout the town. If you start adding units to those, you're creating multifamily where multifamily is not otherwise allowed. ADUs are exceptional. They've existed as in-law apartments in our town for years, but they are an exception. And I see no legal reason why we couldn't provide certain restrictions such as they're only going to be in the single-family districts, subject to limitations. I would prefer they be subject to special permit as they are in several of the towns I just cited. Dedham, Westwood, Walpole. Sharon allows them as a matter of right. The limitation on occupancy, I think, is, could be useful, whether it's to the number of bedrooms or to the number of occupants. One of the towns limits it to two people. Again, we're talking about something that's accessory. And people who live in single-family and bought into single-family districts, I think, have a reasonable expectation that those will remain in single-family districts. What we're opening up here, even though the idea is a good idea to provide more housing or to provide people with an opportunity to make better use of their property when they don't need the whole house anymore, I think that we have to respect the single-family districts that people bought into and not have them all of a sudden turned into two-family districts, which there is potential for that, particularly with absentee owners. So I'd like to suggest that that be considered. I also disagree with the idea that we cannot impose some sort of a standard on how these things are going to look. Maybe the building code, or the zoning code, rather, prohibits the requirement of certain types of materials and certain types of methods of construction. But here where there are existing buildings, the other towns around us require that they be visually compatible or that they be architecture, they preserve the architectural integrity where they come right out and say it has to look like the single-family house it was. You know, to resemble that and be faithful to that and not to have something that is going to stick out like a sore thumb because that damages the neighborhood and the neighbors. We can limit that. We have visual compatibility in our bylaw already in certain contexts. And I don't see why the town, if this is adopted, can't include in the bylaw a requirement that whatever's built, whatever's added on, has to look like it belongs there. Because there will be people who do something different that won't care. And that can be enforced. If it's a matter of right, then it's going to be the building inspector's decision and anybody who isn't happy can appeal it to the zoning board of appeals. It's not a building code issue, it's a zoning code issue. And if it's by special permit, then the zoning board would have control over that matter. They'd have to be reasonable, but other people do it that way. I don't know why we're leaving it so wide open. I think there should be a limitation on short-term occupancy. And then anything should be at least, any Tennessee agreement should be a minimum of six months. And some towns elsewhere in the Commonwealth limit these by special permit that has to be renewed every so many years so they know what's going on, and particularly with respect to single-family neighborhoods. I'm not trying to keep people out, but I do think there's value in trying to preserve the single-family districts that we have and the expectations of the people who bought in not to have all of a sudden a whole bunch of two-family houses which effectively would be necessary coming, springing up around them. I do have a question, too. Is it contemplated that the, a suite built over a garage could be an ADU?
Yes.
No?
If it's attached.
If it's attached.
Well, the garage is attached.
If it's a detached structure.
But if it's attached to the house.
If the garage is attached.
Yes.
Must it communicate directly with the main house?
Yeah, according to the proposed egress modifications, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I wasn't, I answered as if the assumption was that the garage is attached to the house.
Yeah.
A separate garage, no. That was a concern of mine out of the gate. I didn't want to see those.
If we were talking about detached ADUs, I'd already be calling contractors.
Okay.
But we're not.
Yeah.
So, you know, because it hasn't been clear whether we are limiting the number of stories on these units. Are we limiting the number of stories to one story?
No, but a 750-square-foot unit and a stairway, I don't know how much you're going to be able to do.
Well, I've got a 575-square-foot office suite that has three rooms that are already laid out as separate rooms, that have, two of them 120 feet, which qualifies as a two-person bedroom. Granted, they don't have closets, but there's still plenty of room after those units are taken into account to put a kitchen, bathroom and all that. So I don't buy it that you, you know, and I'm not a builder and I appreciate people who are builders, but you look at the plans and there's, you can put a lot of stuff in these. I think the reduction in area is a helpful change. But, you know, I tried to lay out some concerns. I know that parking is going to be a question for people. It has been a question in our discussions. Also the question of utilities. Are we putting any restrictions or controls on how the utilities?
So we did discuss that and I actually asked about it, but the result of the conversation was no. That there's not a prohibition on separate utilities? In other words, you're suggesting that it should all run off the main house?
No, I'm not. I'm suggesting that maybe water and sewer should run off the main house as they do in most other properties.
Sure.
One line coming in. They want to do a separate meter, that's not a big deal once they get in, but.
Okay.
But I also see value in certain things like telephone, internet, cable, TV being separately metered. They should be, as they are in most places. Electricity can go either way. But if I were in the big house, I wouldn't want the tenant leaving all the lights on all the time, so maybe I'd want that separately metered. And vice versa. But I, you know, are we going to say anything about that? Should we say anything? Some towns do.
Sure.
Put limitations on that. So again, parking, you know, I think that, you know, we would do better if we could, if we limited the number of bedrooms. That would help to reassure people that these units are not going to get built and require, and end up with a lot of crowding in certain neighborhoods that doesn't presently exist. I think that we should make sure they are visually compatible with the other, with the existing house. I've already said, you know, all these things, but I'm trying to stress that. I have not had the benefit of looking at this. I will certainly look at this proposed bylaw, the changes, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. But again, I looked at what our neighbors have done and I'm surprised that we're, I'm surprised that we're proposing something that is so wide open that we will not have a whole lot of control over.
So given your experience in this area and your comments are, you know, you've put a lot of time and effort into this, if I could just ask you about the ownership requirements?
Yeah.
What about a situation where there's a, you know, a family that's owned a house for 60 years and the owner may be elderly and out of the facility? You might be talking generations down, it might be in a trust. How do you enforce those sorts of things after a certain, I mean, I understand the idea, but in, on the ground, how would you enforce it in a black and white?
I mentioned that in my memo, that you've got to, that we have to have a definition of owner occupancy that takes into account.
You mentioned towns that have kinship, three degrees or whatever, but it gets a little murky.
That's for the tenant, that's for the occupant.
Of course, yeah.
The ADU has to have that, a connection to the owner of the property. But my suggestion was that, in my second bullet point, that the idea of having owner occupancy of one of the units, and for the others who don't have it, let me give out copies.
Sure.
I guess I didn't realize you, it hadn't been distributed, General.
Thank you.
You have a copy.
You requested that I go to Ernie and Brian.
Only because they were having a meeting party.
That's what Holly did.
But I assume that beyond that, it might get distributed for discussion.
Holly forwarded it.
I'll take one, I don't have one.
So my second point about ownership, I did say that that requirement would require us to come up with a definition of owner. So people own, many people own their homes in some sort of trust. But it would have to be, you can look at the beneficial interest in those things as to who controls it and who's actually benefiting from it.
Well, schedule beneficiaries isn't often a record. I know what you're saying, but those aren't often publicly available, is sort of the point.
Most of those trusts are not publicly available.
Yeah.
All they list is the trustees, not even the beneficiaries. So you require people to produce them. We're offering people with this idea of an ADU something that has not been available legally. And by the way, I don't think that just because it's been done a lot, as we have anecdotal evidence that it's been done a lot over the years, that that justifies doing something because people have been breaking the law for so many years, let's just let them, let everybody do it now. That's not, that shouldn't be a justification for a zoning change. But if we're offering people something that allows them to make more use of their property than they're otherwise allowed under zoning by amending the zoning bylaw, we have the opportunity as part of that to have certain requirements, just as everything else has certain requirements. You want to build multifamily, you better fit certain requirements. You want to build this type of operation, you need to meet certain requirements. So we could require people to produce evidence as to who's going to live there, what the relationship is to ownership, whether it's a trust or something else. And I don't think that these should be, the basis for these should be making more money. The basis should be a reasonable extension of the use of a property that is perhaps underused in a way that is helpful to owners, helpful to the neighborhood, helpful to the housing supply, but not at the cost of damaging the characters of neighborhoods with either unsightly additions or overcrowding, whether it's overcrowding of people or overcrowding of motor vehicles. We haven't really answered the question of parking in this unless there's something in what I just got. And that's, but that was a concern we saw the last time.
Well, we did discuss parking at length and Sarah or Gary, is there any summary that we can offer with regard to the parking?
Well, we talked about how requiring more parking in some cases would interfere with the feel of a property as a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood by converting more space than is reasonably necessary to paved surface. It does require a modest amount of parking if the addition of an ADU would exceed the number of spaces that it needs. So the bylaw for right now requires a home or a dwelling unit with two or more bedrooms to have three parking spaces. So if they have five already and they put on an ADU, this doesn't require them to construct more, but if they only have three, then they would need to put in one more parking space, which, given the size requirements that we're discussing and tossing around, is not, I think, an unreasonable amount of parking to require for, you know, one, maybe two-bedroom ADU. So, you know, to the extent that, you know, as was discussed, you know, last week, that you're envisioning four or five-bedroom, you know, units, then, you know, I think that's not an illegitimate kind of concern to have, but to the extent that it is a regulated unit by size. And given the fact that a lot of parking would potentially create a pretty significant visual impact going to that, that single-family feel, I think it as written responds to those needs and is appropriate, but that's my recommendation.
Okay.
What is the parking requirement in this town? Is there a parking requirement?
One.
Parking shall be available for use by the occupants of the ADU. This may result in an extra addition of one office, three parking spaces. The total parking required by the bylaw exceeds existing conditions.
This is exactly as I was reading for. This isn't anything that's changed.
That's exactly what?
This is how it was written.
I know. There were a lot of questions last week about parking. We heard a lot of questions about that. So you now have, let's say you do an ADU, you now have two dwelling units. And if one has two bedrooms and one has more than two or more in the main house, you now need six parking spaces to satisfy zoning. There are plenty of houses that have barely two spaces in their driveway, sometimes including the garage and then one deep beyond that. And all of a sudden, we're going to add another household. How are we going to deal with that? I agree with Ms. Nixon that that might take away from the idea that we're trying to make these look like they fit, but that gets back to the question of size and limiting the occupancy. And, you know, most people, when they think of an ADU, think of a small, a small addition to a house that one or two people live in. And these starting to sound a little big and with no limitations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just I think on that, we talked about this, the ADU would only, we're not asking for three more parking spaces.
What?
We're asking for one. So if your, if your house, if you've got a three-bedroom house and you have three parking spaces already, you're going to be required to add one more. If you have available, if you have five parking spaces right now, you've got a two-car garage and you have a big driveway that can fit four cars, you can already fit six cars. We're not requiring you to add any.
Maybe, what if you don't have, Mr. Chairman, what if you don't have that parking, that two-car garage and three or four spaces in the driveway?
We're requiring one, one additional.
Then.
Even though you're adding potentially two, three, four people to the property.
I guess if the property can't accommodate it, then it's a special permit question, right? Like if, you have to go for the ZBA, I'm sorry.
We're requiring one additional space, the bylaws, one additional space.
It says one office, three space shall be available for use by the occupants. So you're countermanding the section 6.1.
For an ADU, yes, I would say.
You should make that clear, that notwithstanding other provisions of the bylaw, we're not requiring the parking. And then where do the cars go?
If you, if you know that you're going to, somebody's coming in with two, two or three cars, then maybe they're not coming in because.
If you don't have room.
If they don't have room, I mean, at some point, we're not asking anybody to, we don't want people to pave their yards.
I agree. I agree with that. But the reality may very well be that you've got three cars added to the neighborhood and know where to put them because you're only requiring them to create one more parking space.
Now, there may be a lot in an S2 district that could accommodate adding two spaces very easily.
So you're not making it a requirement.
But it's not a requirement.
You're leaving it up to the people who may not have any interest in doing anything but the bare minimum when it comes to design, when it comes to compliance with parking, when it comes to all kinds of other things. This is the opportunity to tighten this up so that the result is perceived by the voters at town meeting as a good idea with, not just a good idea in terms of, you know, giving an opportunity for more housing, which I agree with, but it's going to be a good idea that will look good in the end and that will have a, will not have a detrimental effect on the neighborhoods. Basically, I envision some of the things people will build that will not look good and will be cramming people in. We keep hearing we can't limit the number of bedrooms. Sure you can. The other towns have done, and all of these bylaws, by the way, with these requirements. with these requirements, were approved by the Attorney General, who has the last word in these matters. So, if, if it's allowed, if it's not allowed, how did they get through? It's allowed. And they did it, and they're our neighbors. We, we often look to how our neighbors are doing things for ideas on how to do things. And I don't always agree with that, I don't always think they're doing it right, but I found it instructive to see how they handled it and how they have limited it to requiring the owner to be involved in one or the other of the ADUs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the room or online? Sir, name and address, please.
I'll just, Gary, thank you for your explanation, and just make a comment about the mean of egress. And as it's required to mean of egress, it does not have to be the two mean of egress, one of them to inside the house. Because let's say you have a tenant, it should be maybe connected with the house as inside, but it does not need to be qualified as a mean of egress. It can be the two mean of egress to outside of the apartment directly.
Right.
And in case you have a tenant or you have a kid that you don't want, like you want to lock your door, that does not interfere with being of mean of egress to, to be able to unlock the house, the door and run away in case you need to run out. So, as like that point itself. As for the number of bedroom, I mean, if you want to limit the number of the bedroom, if you make the 750 square feet, throw a number of three-bedroom, because you're not going to be able to fit more of that anyway in the first place. If that will help that presentation to looks good. I don't think if, if you're going to have 120 square feet per bedroom, which is like a 10 by 12, and add a closet and a hallway to get to it, you'll be lucky to get three-bedroom right there. If that has, has like an explanation to make, say, oh, we talk about add three-bedroom or like number of bedroom, because 700 square feet as a space, as an office may be doable, but as a space, as like someone to live there and have a furniture and like a kitchen, I feel like it's right on the money, not leaving like a leeway for more people to expand it. Now, we talk about additions, like to exist in rent. How about if it's basement? And comply with the windows required for the bedrooms to be like egress, you know, egress for the bedroom and stuff like that. But that basement does not have stairs that goes inside. Do have to create stairs that goes inside the two-family, to inside the apartment, instead like going outside the building directly. If we are given that.
Your question is egress and the stairway out of the basement?
You still need a common door. You still need a common door between the two.
So, that means you're going to create more different space. Is that stairs going to be part of the 750? Or is it going to be included in the two-family? Because a lot of two-families don't have an inside stairs to go to the basement, who have a door from outside only. And if you're trying to make that basement as like an ADU, am I obligated to make stairs? Is it counted from the 750?
I believe it is, Mr. Chairman.
Then you're going to lose another like 150.
That's a Gary question, yeah.
Yes.
So.
Gary, can you offer some wisdom on that, with the stairway?
If you're going to have, if you're going to have an ADU in a basement, then you need, you still need two means of egress from that ADU, and it still has to be ancillary to the main dwelling unit, which means it has to be connected inside the building through a set of stairs to the main floor. That may or may not be one of the means of egress, depends on, you know, how much of a walkout it is. At the very least, you're going to need one hinged door or one slider from the basement level that leads directly outside, and then an unrestricted door up the stairs and out of the main dwelling unit would likely be the scenario. I mean, there could be other instances on a, a house that's on a sloped lot could have two, you know, two exit doors at the basement level. It's conceivable, but it wouldn't be that commonplace.
That's good. And even that over the garage, like what he's talking about, if I'm going to the, from the, above the garage to the garage to walk to the house, is that included? Does the garage count it as a?
If, if, if it's going to be, if it's, if the ADU is 100% above the garage, then you need a, an exit door on that level and then another set of stairs down through the garage that would lead outside and also into that house.
That's, that's clear.
So, again, this is part of the building code review, this is part of the permit review.
Cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman. You know, Mr. Hearn's, you know, he had, a lot of those questions that he had were questions that I had, you know, last week, and Gary, you know, kind of went over with them, and I felt a lot more comfortable. So, if possible, Gary, I put you on the spot, but some of the concerns that Mr. Hearn brought up, we had talked about, and if you could just touch on, you know, why we're not limiting, I know, I think the short answer was a lot of these things were already in the building codes and, and, you know, we're not trying to rewrite the, reinvent the wheel here. Could you just address some of Attorney Hearn's concerns about why we're not requiring, you know, limiting bedrooms? You know, we're not making that part of the bylaw. What was the other one was?
Designist, no.
Making the, the building, using the same materials as some, as Mr. Hearn pointed out, as some of our other towns are doing?
You know, there's, I took a few notes in, in no particular order. I mean, again, I'm going to reiterate the fact that 48 says that you're not, if you're not, no zoning should regulate the interior of a single-family home. So, the ranch with an ADU is still a single-family home, just because it has two, it has a main dwelling unit and an accessory dwelling unit, and it's still considered a single-family home. So, I think that in and of itself restricts us from, you know, telling people how many bedrooms they can have or how many kitchens they can have. Maybe there, maybe somebody wants an ADU with two kitchens and a bedroom and a bathroom. It's, it's, I think we want to be very careful about excluding viable family use for, you know, in, in different circumstances. So, you know, that, that going to the owner occupancy. I think somebody made an excellent point about, maybe it was the chairman, about, you know, a house that's been held in, you know, in the family might be owned either in a trust or, you know, an elderly parent that's moved into assisted living, but has two adult children or an adult children or a sibling or whatever the arrangement is, should still have a viable option to, to take advantage of that housing. And I think unreasonably excluding circumstances is, I think is a bit overreach. That's just my opinion. Occupancy and occupant load is very strictly regulated by the state building code. And so, that cannot, in my opinion, cannot be regulated by zoning, how many people can live in a single-family home. That is regulated strictly, or any other building for that matter, is regulated very strictly by the building code by use and square footage and egress. So, I would, I would steer clear of that as, as well. As far as what other neighboring towns have done, there's, there runs the gambit. I wouldn't necessarily, and I'm not picking on Sharon, but I know some of their bylaws and some of the things that they do, and I wouldn't necessarily model Norwood after that. There are towns that do it by special permit. I've seen the upsides and the downsides of that, both in permitting as a builder, as well as enforcement as a code official, trying to, you know, enforce ownership or enforce occupancy within a single-family home and how many people are there. And with regard to parking, again, I think adding one parking space is very reasonable. It is part of the, the ADU bylaw, so that, I think that overrides the, and again, these are existing buildings, so we're not going around regulating existing buildings. When somebody puts on an addition, even if it's not an ADU, if they just put on a big family room or put a second floor on their house, we don't require that they bring their parking up to code. So, I think, again, what is proposed is reasonable. And then the last thing, again, with the visual compatibility, I don't know how you enforce that. I mean, there's a lot of different aesthetic styles out there, and not everyone likes them. You know, there's, there's a lot of different ways to, to build a house and side it and to, and, you know, to make it look appealing. Most of the time, it's, it's done to maintain, you know, to look like it's, it's supposed to be there, it's part of the house. So, I think, again, we're, we're overreaching in a bylaw that says you have to make it look a certain way. And then how do we enforce that? At what, at what point do we, you know, are we drafting a bylaw that says you have to paint your house a certain color or you have to use, you can't use vinyl siding, or where is this spot? I guess, but, so those are my, those are my comments.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I actually have a question, and it relates to one of Attorney Hearn's suggestions. He suggests, suggests limiting ADUs to properties containing only single-family houses. Now, it's no, it's pretty common knowledge that Norwood has, Norwood's housing stock includes a good, a good number of multifamilies, many of which are probably not owner occupied in any way, shape, or form. Is, I know it's hard to predict the future, but is, is there any thought as to whether or not there would be a rash of requests to build these things on existing multis to effectively just create another apartment?
So, this wouldn't be allowed for multifamily. So, multifamily is three or more units.
Okay, so only a two-family.
This only applies for single and two-families.
So, reading this to Properties.
So, yeah. So, duplexes and things.
Just so, so only, only twos. All right. Thank you for the clarifying. Debbie.
I know everybody's put a lot of work into this. I know, just some more observations and questions. In the last week, I've gotten five calls from town meeting members who have asked me questions that quite frankly, we didn't even ask. But some of the points I would like to make is, we are doing, and I know it's not the planning board's fault or Sarah, anybody's fault that somebody didn't know that this was part of the MDC and all the other things we're doing, this kind of. But we are asking town meeting to vote on a number of new possible units to be built and to increase our housing, affordable and otherwise, to increase our housing. And a question that seems to keep popping into my head with single families is, is this about making money or making housing? Some of the property values are completely tied to neighborhoods, and people that bought in single-family neighborhoods pay a premium to live in single-family neighborhoods. You can call that whatever you want, but if you bought in a single-family neighborhood because you wanted that kind of lifestyle at the time, is it, should we be changing that after the fact? I think the person that's, I think they have to be, have some right to, they bought in a single-family neighborhood. And property values are tied to compatibility. Everybody that lives in a single-family neighborhood, I don't care what town it's in, it's, you pay a premium to live in those neighborhoods. You know, the parking is a big issue for me because we have some issues with that right around where I live. I won't go into that. But Sarah, you know, I'm the last one that bought you the blacktop space or green space. But if you don't, it, it doesn't look ugly to put a driveway in because now you need six cars in your driveway, only have room for two. So, what are they going to do? Be on my berm, which everybody teases me as my, I'd love to plant on my berm. So, the cars are going to go someplace. I'm not having a permit for this. There is a, there's, if you don't like what the planning board says or the zoning board says, you have an appeal process. Some of the things that I looked into this week, you know, the parking is, is a big deal to me because I'm quite frankly, rather live in Jamaica Plain than Norwood, but I moved out to Norwood because I was sick of not being able to park my car when I come home, and that's an issue. But we have a population, according to Mary Lou, of 29,207 in Norwood. Of that, according to the assessor's office, we have, people, backside tax, 30,000 registered vehicles in the town. Now, that includes commercial, and we can't have a breakdown, and we don't know what neighborhoods they're in. We have a lot of cars. I know the, the cars that are around the MDC communities that we're looking at, they're not going to spill out into neighborhoods. But I just, cars are an issue, particularly in the tighter two-family neighborhoods and the single-family neighborhoods when we can't get them off the streets. Again, I won't go into, take some point of why these particular things, but it is issue. And property values are an issue. And again, you can call it whatever you want. People that lived in a, buy in a single-family neighborhood paid a premium when they bought in a single-family neighborhood. I am on board with, with the gardens and over by Shaw's and all of that makes sense. We're trying to create more housing. I am, and I'm listening to the people that voted for me to become a planning board member. I've been on the phone probably as much as you guys have with nothingness. And as a lot of people don't understand it because they think it has something, you know, they're surprised, in your defense, we had a ton of meetings for this. That's not an excuse. However, these are concerns that I have, and I think, I think we're opening a can of worms. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. No further comments, and anybody else online?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if there's nobody else online, I don't want to prevent anybody else, but I do want to.
The floor is yours.
If I could. I know the building commissioner has expressed some concern about how do you enforce some of this stuff? And I'll go back to the fact that Dedham, by the way, requires a special permit from the zoning board and requires that exterior alterations required to meet applicable building fire health codes are permitted and must be designed to conform to the architectural integrity of the structure and the residential character of the neighborhood. The bylaw further says alterations to the building dwelling shall be designed to be compatible with the surrounding residential district. So, that's Dedham, special permit, and they tell you, you know, I'm not saying you got to, what color it's going to be painted, but it should fit the house that it's being attached to. Their accessory. In Westwood, special permit is required. The principal dwelling or accessory building or structure to be altered or constructed to contain an accessory apartment shall be a single-family dwelling. It limits it to that. And it's further says, under design requirements, an accessory apartment shall be subject to the following design requirements. The exterior character of the property containing an accessory apartment within a principal or accessory building or structure shall maintain the appearance of a single-family property. So, they are telling you that it's got to look like a single-family property. Walpole, the, an accessory in law suite must be located within a single-family dwelling. Again, they're limiting it to single-family dwellings. They require a special permit from the Board of Appeals. And with respect to appearance, they state, any proposed addition as part of this section must keep the outside appearance of a single-family house. They do allow for that to be altered as a condition of a special permit by the zoning board. So, how do other towns do it? Well, number one, they make it a special permit requirement rather than a matter of right. But they all say, all those three that I quoted, Dedham, Westwood, Walpole, and Sharon also, which allows it as a matter of right. The external appearance of the structure in which the accessory apartment is located shall not be significantly altered from the appearance of a single-family structure or accessory structure there too. They also have other requirements that are fair review in terms of who lives there. So, I, I don't buy it that, oh, how do we enforce this? We enforce it as we enforce any other requirement of a special permit. Plans are filed with the building department all the time as a result of special permits that's... that say specifically, or the, or the zoning code, the zoning bylaw rather, says specifically how something is supposed to be constructed, built, buffered, landscaped, whatever. Those are the conditions that are to be enforced by the zoning enforcement officer and can be appealed to the zoning board if there's a disagreement on enforcement. I would prefer that we make, put this up to the requirement of a special permit from the zoning board rather than as a matter of right. So we have a little more control about how these things will look, how they will fit into neighborhoods and that we can anticipate the problems instead of just allowing it as a matter of right and then finding we have a whole bunch of problems that we, we could have dealt with. So I don't buy it that you can't limit this or regulate it to make it look good. You can and we can enforce that just as the other towns enforce it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Joe. I do agree on the, the parking. I, we were out walking yesterday around the neighborhood and there are areas that have parking problems as it is. There was another point I think that Debbie made, that there are a lot of housing things going in at this time. And I'm thinking maybe we could wait on this until we perfect it. I like the idea of the special permit. And see, I'd like to see what happens with the, the rest of the housing and see how that settles in and give this some time before we act on it.
Okay. Derek.
It doesn't have to do with, was recently discussed, just has to deal with the wording in, in this. Under the definitions, the 8.2.2 definitions, one accessory dwelling unit is the second sentence. ADUs are, shall be incidental. Should we have the word are or should be ADUs shall be incidental?
I gave my copy away. Thank you. You had extras down there, right?
Yeah. So ADUs are shall be?
Yes, so that is to be deleted and then shall be was inserted and replaced.
All right, so ADUs shall be incidental to the.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I'm good. So I guess get a, do you have any, any thoughts?
Joe, I kind of, kind of agree with you. It could be a very useful tool to help a lot of people around Norwood, around the area. I'm not sure. There's a lot of good questions about this. And I'm really, to be honest, not sure where I stand because I, I hear a lot of good questions on both sides. So it's, it's very difficult to make up my mind on this, that I think, like Joe said about the special permit. Mr. Attorney Hearn said about the special permit, at least that gives the door for some control, what you want to put in that. As far as requirements, at least we would have, you know, a little extra leverage there.
Do you have any thoughts about special permits or?
I do, but.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I actually was gonna.
I'm sorry.
Lead into that if, what would be the, besides having extra oversight, extra meetings, extra cost to the town?
What are the downsides?
What are the downsides?
It's a fair question. You know, I think with any, any zoning amendments, any policies that we try to impose through a zoning bylaw, you have to balance, you know, how much regulation ensures we get the, the outcome we want, right, as a town and as a community? And balance then against the risk of over-regulating because at some point, you know, you cross this threshold where you're causing more damage with over-regulation and overreach than you're actually getting any benefit with, right? And so it's always going to be a balance and you always have to weigh those two things against one another. The advantages of having a byright bylaw instead of a special permit bylaw are that you can, you can set your guidelines, you know, this is where we want our exit doors and this is what we want our size and it, for people who need these types of units. And very often, I know we're really focusing on like the potential for investor activity, but the reality in my experience is that the vast majority of people are indeed using these for, for families, right? Or for caregivers or it is something that supports the needs of the household. In the circumstances that I have seen in my experience, you know, adding a lot of regulatory delay and expense, very often people are uncomfortable, homeowners are unfamiliar with, with the requirements. They feel like they need to hire attorneys to represent them before the ZBA. It's added cost. And it doesn't really achieve, you know, always what, what you're after. If the question is, you know, have we considered what other communities are doing? I can say again, just from my own personal experience, I've worked in one of those communities with one of those bylaws that was referenced and I've been on the enforcement side. And if I can be candid, it's a, it's a nightmare. You know, the, the special permit process can be not only, you know, a regulatory burden and a cost burden on the applicants, but very often what I saw in the outcome of these hearings was people having to air their very personal reasons for wanting to construct this unit and use their property to suit their household's needs in a public setting. And rarely did I see, and I had great board, boards that I worked with, rarely did I see any kind of outcome at that review that really changed the proposal. The vast majority of the time, it was, yep, this looks fine, you know, and it sounds like you need it. What it was, was an opportunity for a lot of neighbors to be able to get intimately involved in the stories of the household that came before seeking the relief. And I never felt comfortable with that. So I'm speaking just for myself, kind of being on the, the planning and the enforcement side. I never felt like that achieved what the town was going for. And so I, I would caution against pursuing those, that type of process or those requirements. And I wouldn't recommend that if the language that was being proposed for byright requirements wasn't also strong. And that's why I do feel like it's important to get that right, you know? If, if you're not going to have a special permit process, then be very clear about what, what you expect. And I, I think that these requirements go a long way towards answering that. But I, I do believe you have to have both of those components to proceed with a, a byright option.
Mr. Chair.
Well, I'd like to thank Sarah. That was a very, very meaningful perspective to offer. Debbie.
Yeah, Sarah, it just, if it's a nightmare, if it's a nightmare either way, whether it's byright or, no, you said they knew about special permit and it became a nightmare, then why are we doing it? And how do, how do I, how do I justify in my head the number, the seven acres around the city and that we need to add this on this particular train? How do I?
Well, I mean.
How do you understand where you're getting at?
Yeah, I just think it's a little bit of an apples and oranges thing because the.
It is apples and oranges, but not at town meeting.
No, no, I mean, town meeting will certainly process the information and undertake their function. But here I think the need, and Sarah can much better articulate the need, I would imagine, than I can. But this is property owners who have specific needs based upon their own family and economic needs where they might feel that this small addition to their home in this particular, within these parameters makes sense while the other zoning issues that are before the town and the state relate to a crisis of, of, of housing shortage. So they both address the same need, but in much different ways.
I can also say too, if I may, they, they come to, I think town meeting, you're right, in different ways. One is the state regulation and the other one is trying to address needs of residents. I can tell you that the overlap here, like to respond to this idea that it feels like too much too soon. And I, that's legitimate. I, again, my perspective, having been sitting with residents in community engagement sessions for the last year plus, talking about MBTA housing needs, I have heard a steady drumbeat of residents building consensus that this is something that they would like to see more flexibility on and they would like to see the town address. So even though that wasn't part of the planning process, you know, for, for this ADU specifically, it was for MBTA. You know, I can say that, and, and we have the qualitative data to back that up, that people generally voiced a lot of interest in these types of smaller, you know, modest, more flexible styles of housing in, in the neighborhoods where people already live.
Sure.
Gary's racist.
I'm sorry. Oh, Gary, do you have a comment, a question?
Yeah, I just, a couple of quick things. Number one, to, to, to sort of piggyback on what Sarah had mentioned. I've, I've been a building official in two other towns, both of which, Bedfield and Ellis, both of which had requirements for special permits for in-law apartments or accessory dwelling units. And I will tell you my experience there in, in Bedfield in particular was that people will go to great lengths to avoid going to the ZBA. And, and when I say by great lengths, either in making design modifications that don't meet the strict definition of an ADU, even though that's exactly what they're going to be used at as, or they, they will just do, they'll make modifications after occupancy that we can then, we don't have any pathway to enforce. So I think the intent of this, of this bylaw is to provide a, a pathway for compliance that we can enforce by, by providing, you know, restrictions and conditions on it upfront by right. That's, that's one, one comment. The other is that I want to point out that most, I would say 75% of the additions or substantial expansions of homes in Norwood are, are non-conforming structures and require a trip to the ZBA for approval anyway. So it, I, I don't think we're, it's going to turn into the wild west. A, a lot of them are going to end up to the ZBA simply by the size of, of the alteration or the addition. Right, but not the use, the use, the, the use, again, I'm going to go back to regulating the use of the interior of a single-family home. And then the last, again, back to the, to Attorney Hearn's comments about visual compatibility. Nowhere else in our bylaw do, do we regulate design. If someone has a lot that they want to build on by right, we don't regulate whether they can build a colonial, a contemporary, you know, house with a flat roof or a 12-inch. It's not anything that we regulate because there's nothing that says what a single-family home looks like. So I think it's, it's, it's a bit of an overreach to take an existing home and, and, you know, exhibit design restrictions on it. Just, just my thoughts.
Attorney Hearn.
Mr. Chairman, we already, we do already in other contexts in our bylaws, require visual compatibility and put design standards on. Now granted, they're for commercial. I'm not talking, if, if the building commissioner is talking about, if somebody comes in with a plan, take a vacant lot and build a house, you can't tell them what, what it's going to look like, colonial, bungalow, craftsman, contemporary, whatever. We can't tell them that. I agree 100% and it should be that way. I'm talking about where there's already a building there. It's not unfair to say to somebody, you're going to add on to that, make that look like the building that's already there. So it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb. I have seen additions on houses in this town that look horrible the way somebody designed the addition. There, and various neighborhoods I've lived in and other areas I go through regularly, you see houses that just don't look good. And who does that injure? It injures the people who live around there. Now to the point made a couple of minutes ago about the Ms. Dixon's experience in another town, which is Westwood. I mean, Westwood has a lot of regulation. To do almost anything, you've got to deal with the planning board on, on rather simple projects. So they, that's the way they approach things. And, and they, you know, there's good reason for, in their mind, that they voted these bylaws to call for that. But again, people, you know, just because it might be difficult, isn't a reason for throwing something out or saying we're not going to do it that way. You have to think about the effect on the neighborhoods also, the effects on the immediate neighborhoods, the people, the immediate neighbors and the, and the people around who, you know, may, this is going to affect people. And on the question of not telling people what to do inside their houses, we do that all the time. When we say it's a single-family house or it's a two-family house or we allow a three-family house. It was noted that people go, a lot of the houses that are being added on to in this town often have to go to the zoning. A fair number of them do, a fair number of them because the way the bylaw is written, the building commissioner has certain leeway with certain additions and changes not to require people to go to the zoning board. But even if they have to go to the zoning board to add on to the house, this use would be allowed as a matter of right. So the neighbors have no say in the matter. And shouldn't the neighbors, as at least in Westwood, if they require a special permit and in Dedham and in Walpole, the neighbors have a say. Now, the board can ignore the say that, that the neighbor's comments that, you know, well, we don't like them. We don't like who they're going to move in there or something like that. But the board can look at whether they think this is good as a structure. This is not about the people who live there. It's about the structure that's going to be there and how that structure is going to be used. That's where I think we need some regulation. And believe me, I'm not one who's a big fan of a lot of regulation. I, I think we go overboard at some things, but to go from nothing to an absolute right with neighbors having no say in the matter, I think goes way too far. And so I would, again, there are ways to handle this. You know, zoning board likes to see renderings of houses, you know, before they're, before they will approve something. Why do they do that? Well, they want to have an idea whether what they're giving somebody as a matter of discretion is going to fit in with the neighborhood. Why shouldn't the same be done in a situation like this? I agree. They can't tell you what to do inside your single-family home. And I decline to provide floor plans in most cases because it's nobody's business how you design your single-family home and the layout of the rooms. But the exterior elevations are frequently asked for by the board because they want to know what it's going to look like if they give somebody permission to do something. And I think the same thing should apply here. So just because it's difficult, it's not a reason not to try to do it. And if it doesn't work out, we can amend it. But if this goes through like this, it really becomes a horses out of the barn before we even know what's going to happen. So I don't know if this question.
Thank you. Ernie.
Just a comment on, on that. So if someone is going to put a regular, they want to put a family room or they want to add on a one-car garage and make it a two-car garage. If they do, if they are still within the setbacks, and this is a question for Gary and Sarah, if they, if they are still within the setbacks, you know, 30-feet rear setback, 15-foot side yard, if they still comply, they don't go to the ZBA, correct?
Correct.
And you have, Gary, you have no design standards. If someone wants to put a, a addition on their house and they don't have to go to the ZBA because they still need all the setbacks, we do not require any design standards today, correct?
No, they can, they can build the ugliest addition they want on their property.
And it doesn't go before this.
We don't impose design standards and that's why I think it's unfair to impose them on someone simply because it's an ADU. If we're going to, if we're going to regulate design, because again, there's, there's no definition of what a single-family home looks like.
Right. So we don't, we don't, if somebody puts an addition on, they don't have to go to the ZBA because they don't.
We live, we live in height.
And if someone wanted to put an ADU on, but now they have a 15-foot side setback and they, they want relief because they're going to end up with 10 feet, they're still going, now they are going back to the ZBA, correct?
Correct. If that is already non-conforming and they're going to expand it beyond 25%, which in this case, that, that, you know, almost every case it would be beyond 25%, they have to go for special permit.
Or if they exceed, if they encroach on the setback, they would have to go to the ZBA.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. If they're creating a new nonconformity, yes.
So we're really not changing anything that's not already on the books.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sarah?
To follow up on Ernie, I, I see where Ernie is going with this and I, I agree. You know, I think our bylaw.
You know, I think our bylaw already protects for potential structures, expansion of structures, changes to structures, that by our existing regulations, the setbacks and so forth, you know, could be intrusive or detrimental to the neighbors. So following that process, it would still apply here, right? If you're proposing an ADU that exceeds those requirements, then you need the relief. That makes the relief granted by the ZBA about the structure itself. I think if you limit the relief to the use, right, and make it a different set of requirements where it's about the ADU and not necessarily about the overall structure, I think it's inevitable, and I've seen this in practice, it's inevitable, that the level of question and review and public input into the proposal becomes about the people and the use, which isn't appropriate, you know? And it's, like I said to my earlier point, it can get ugly and it can, it can cause harm. I think it's easy at a table like this to say that, you know, what's the harm done by having a special permit here, hearing where neighbors can come and ask their questions? And lots of times, there is no harm done, and that is a good thing. In this case, I do think you do get to a certain point where the harm done by kind of allowing that process to continue, when it's not necessary, when we have the controls in place to regulate the structure and the detrimental impact to the neighbors that the structure would impose. When you have those questions then, about the neighbors and the personal differences and, you know, the experience of the homeowner having to kind of come before the board, I think there is a certain amount of harm done, and I think it's our responsibility to kind of, again, like everything, balance the benefits and the, you know, the detrimental effects of every part of our zoning bylaw. I think that's something that really does need to be factored into consideration.
Debbie?
Good segue on that, Ms. Rye. I agree with you in totally the, you know, but if we don't have, my opinion, we don't have something specific, then the neighbors get at each other. I have a belief that this board has got to be fair to both sides, and if we are not definitive at all, and the neighbor that's putting on an ADU doesn't have enough structure and guidelines, then the neighbors are fighting with each other. And, you know, life is uncomfortable, but this is not something that, this, we're adding a whole new thing here. So I think we're not giving it enough time, and I know it's been a year and a half, but I don't, there's too many questions and too many things that are not definitive. So let's put in enough things, and they can ask for relief from that. Is that correct? It's just, I think the board is supposed to keep the neighbors, blame it on us, and keep the neighbors away from each other, like you just said, the neighbors get involved. But if you're asking for something that's above and beyond the pall, then that's, everything's uncomfortable. But if we don't require certain things, then we don't have any control over it for all neighbors, not just the one that, you know, the old lady, myself included, is going, well, go be living in the unit and the kids are going to stay in the other one. I know that's what we're putting in on paper, and I could give you three off the top of my head that that's how they started, and that's not where they're at. And that's okay, because, you know, but that's not what it is. That's what we use as an excuse. Mom's going to move into the smaller unit and the kids are going to stay here. Moms are all going to not always be here. We have to look down the road that when mom's not there and the kids have moved out, that the neighbors aren't all fighting with each other. Because you can fight with your neighbors or you can move, and that's not good. So we have to think of both sides.
Okay. Sir, mind just stating your name and address?
George Holmes, 24 Coach Lane. And a few things with regards to creating a requirement of materials and so forth, you know, even Attorney Herron with what you described without having it in front of me with the other, with the other towns, it creates an issue within itself of interpretation of what is, you know, conforming or, you know, matching the other homes in the area or even the, you know, whether it's for a single-family, you know, that the material used for a single-family. And then if it goes to the ZBA, with regards to what Debbie was saying in terms of concern of fighting with your neighbors, I think that could also create more problem if the person is looking to get this approved. It could create problems between neighbors even furthermore, and as Sarah was saying, it could get even uglier. And I've seen that happen with a lot of things where it's for commercial in towns like, you know, in areas of West Roxbury, where the neighborhood council is very involved with decisions on anything that has to be approved within West Roxbury, for example. And it creates an ugly situation where it's not necessary, especially when, as, you know, has been mentioned by Ernest and by Gary, that, you know, the requirement for, you know, what is considered a single-family, you know, a single-family materials or what it looks like is not required for additions or anything else. I think this falls into the same category. And as was said, that if it's not conforming, then it goes in front of the ZBA and will solve that issue there, so that it, you know, now it would require to have some conformity to the ZBA special permit. And with regards to what Attorney Herron said about requiring the owner occupied to be living on the premises, I don't disagree with that, but not to limit it to only single-family homes, because a lot of families might limit it to family home and need to have an, you know, an ADU, but also need to have that additional income from the legal second unit so that it can provide for the family however they are set up. And it would be unfair to limit it just to single-family only. I think that it's already limited enough at single or two families, so it can't be creating, you know, three families into four families and so on and so forth. So I think, you know, everything else that's been discussed, the changes that have made, you know, to the bylaw as it is now, you know, make complete sense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Go with your, your address again?
24 Coach Lane.
Thank you.
Another comment, sir?
One quick comment.
Yep.
Like Inspector Gary was saying...
I'm sorry, if you didn't say it before, I'm just restating it for the record.
I know a lot of families that their kids cannot afford even to pay rent somewhere. And their kids, after college, they have to come back home, at least they can afford to pay their student loan. And I know a lot of newlyweds, they move out of the town of Norwood because they cannot afford to buy anything in Norwood. And I did some renovation for couples like that who moved, lived all their life in Norwood, cannot afford Norwood anymore, they moved to Mansfield. And there's a lot of younger couples in Mansfield that Norwood will be lucky to have in here, but they move out of Norwood because simply cannot afford Norwood anymore. And I see a lot of people putting their kids in unsafe basement with, in bedrooms that they're not actually bedroom by code, because the, for them to have a space that can put their kids in it require going in front of the zoning board of appeal, or like making more space or stuff like that. What I'm trying to say is, putting a lot of restriction on something can help a lot of families, a lot of people. We actually not helping the people. We are worrying on cosmetics, we are worrying about opinions, we are worrying about when you sell the house or someone else buy it 25, 30 years down the road. How about me and my family where we need to live in it right now? What's about us? We are paying for poverty, we are living in Norwood, we need to live as well the way accommodate our family as well. So I have a daughter's going to graduate from BU this year. What I'm going to do if she cannot come back home, if she need her space, and I cannot have an ADU, what should I do? I cannot afford to pay $2,000 for one-bedroom apartment, tell her move to Rhode Island or move to another state because of full-hour restriction, that's all what we worrying about? Let's focus on the main goal. The main goal is to help our families who live in Norwood. It's not about the cosmetic, because like Gary was saying, there is no addition, it's not going to look like the house. When you do an addition, your house is vinyl siding, it's a common sense that you're going to do vinyl siding for that. Let's leave for the people as well their common sense in their own home. The neighbors going to fight? Trust me, I can give you right now, I moved to my house for 10, for a year and a half, I can give you 10 reasons that my neighbors wants to fight me on something that I'm doing in my house, and it's not a construction. They want to know why I'm putting shelves in my garage. I'm that serious, I'm not joking. And so where we draw the line? You know? So let's focus on the positive of that. The code has enough restriction to go in front of the zoning board of appeal. Setback is a huge part of it. The percentage of the use of the land is a huge part of it. The inspector has a lot of, any way to deal with, let's not create more reason, like more headache to deal with the people on that level as well. So let's hope that that will go through. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So without any further comments from the board or the public or online, I guess...
Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
And a second. As Debbie's away, we'll roll call. Rob?
Rob Ever, aye.
Brian Ashy, aye.
Joe Shan, aye.
Ernie Petchakovsky, aye.
Debbie Homewood, yes.
Okay. Any further actions taken on this one?
So you will be making a vote, so it has been placed on the warrant, you did already vote to place this on the warrant for town meeting in March. Your, typically your motion at the end of your public hearing is whether or not to recommend this to town meeting.
Is there any further discussion on the board now on that particular point?
Just, Mr. Chairman, if I may, a question of Sarah. Any changes that anyone, at this point, where it's already on the warrant, just for clarification, if there's any changes that anybody would like to see, it would have to be made as an amendment on the floor of town meeting, not tonight, correct? Is that...
You would need to take a vote tonight to recommend to town meeting, subject to these changes or whatever changes, where you'd have to be specific about what those changes would be.
So these changes, if we were to vote in the affirmative tonight, where it's already gone to just the process here, we've already submitted the original to the warrant.
Yeah.
So our, our recommendation would be, if we were to make one or opposed, would be recommend the article with these changes.
No.
Maybe Mr. Herron, former moderator...
Not testifying on the matter before you.
Just as a procedure.
It's a legal point of view. Town meeting does not vote on articles. I've said that hundreds of times, and I'll say it again, and for all, anybody listening or watching this, we do not vote on articles. We vote on motions. The point of the warrant and the articles is to give notice of the subject that is going to be brought before the town meeting. It does not have to be the exact same language when you bring the motion, whoever brings the motion to the floor, it can change from what was laid out in the warrant. The warrant is not intended to be specific. We often, particularly on zoning matters, put in the warrant the language, because it's so complicated, that people want to have a sense of what it is, and they know what it is that we're discussing, and that's what's been done so far. But there is no prohibition on the planning board or anybody else who is presenting a matter to town meeting, coming in with something that is different from what was published in the warrant, so long as it is within the scope of the notice, the article, which is the notice to the body of what was going to be discussed. So you could take the latest version, which is within the scope of creating a bylaw that allows for ADUs, and say, we're replacing that first draft, and that's all it is, is a first draft. You know, it might have been about the 10th draft from Sarah's point of view, but you can replace that with that and make this your motion, if it, if it ends up being that or not.
I think that's where you come in with the motions meetings, right? This is all...
You don't have to, you do not have to stick to the letter of the warrant.
Despite what Attorney Herron might think, we actually are not in disagreement on this. My recommendation to you is, if you would like to make a recommendation to town meeting to support the article, subject to the following changes, I would then bring that to the moderator during the motions meeting, and we would discuss potentially incorporating that into a motion, or leave it at the moderator's discretion on how to go through a process, perhaps similar to what Attorney Herron is describing, to make the motion, you know, subject to the following changes.
An example was the Norwood Space Center, Mexius Overlake District. What was published in the warrant and what was presented at town meeting was different, and we provided everybody with copies and we put it up on the screen. Here's where we've made some editing changes.
The planning board's done the same thing for the Boston Providence Highway.
Yeah.
You may remember that in 2021.
So it isn't an amendment. Everybody tries, we're going to have floor amendments. No. The floor amendments come from the people out on the floor, or maybe some other town officials, to say, okay, you presented your motion, we now want to change it. So this is your opportunity to say, well, it's not going to be exactly as in the warrant, it could be as presented tonight, for example, or not. But you don't have to come in and say, oh, now we have to amend what was in the warrant. The warrant means nothing other than to give notice, and that's all it does. We never vote on, we don't vote on articles, we vote on motions, so long as they're within the scope, and as far as I can see, you're still within the scope by a long shot. There's no question about you going outside of the scope of what the town meeting members have been given notice of. So I want to make that clear, because there's often a lot of confusion, oh, we can't change what's in the warrant. Absolutely you can, all the time. The boards do it all the time. But particularly on, we do it because it's so complicated, we want to at least get the original text out there so people know what it is we're talking about, and then go from there.
Thank you.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to rec, that the planning board gives a favorable recommendation to town meeting on this article incorporating changes as written here tonight. Does that...
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
Do you want to say on the proposed bylaw incorporating the changes?
On the proposed bylaw incorporating...
You can't touch an article.
Right. On the proposed bylaw as written, with the changes as written tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Debbie? There's a motion on the floor, no second, but please, yep.
I'm going to vote first?
No, no, please, I'm just, I'm just reminding you where we're saying. Yeah, no, please, second it for discussion. Floor is yours.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's seconded?
Oh, you seconded? All right.
For discussion.
For discussion, okay, yep.
So it's motion made, seconded.
I would, is I'd like to vote first.
Okay. That's the comment? So there's a motion and a second?
You can't limit the discussion.
Yeah, you can, you can have discussion.
No, I'm not letting...
If any other board members want to have discussion, they can.
All right, so everybody's said, from my part, there's been a lot of thought and a lot of time and a lot of very educated people, Gary and Sarah, and a lot of input here. The one, the one thing I have a concern about relates to the two families. That's the only part of this that I would have a concern about. But beyond that, I, I understand that this is a rather charged issue, and there's a lot of people that have concerns, but I think it addresses a real need. So I can support the bylaw as we discuss. I think, I don't know if you have anything more to say, but you've spoken and so has Joe. Don't feel pressured, but do you have any more comments or do you stand by it?
I don't feel a lot of pressure.
Yeah.
Well, I feel better about the downsizing to 750 square feet. I'm starting to understand why you wouldn't want to go in front of ZBA with a special permit. It makes it kind of more sense in that, in that, what was explained. I think, I think I could support... I think, I think I could support it at this point.
I know you've spoken, just do you stand by your position from Brian?
Yeah.
Okay. And Ernie, do you have anything more?
No, I made the motion, so.
You made the motion. Debbie?
Can we confirm that Debbie seconded it?
Debbie, you did second this motion, correct?
I did.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor right now. And ready to take a vote?
I am.
All right. So roll call because you're away. Rob Amber?
Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Heskey, aye.
Joe Sheehan, no.
Ernie Petchakovsky, aye.
Debbie Homewood, no.
Okay.
Thanks, Jason.
All right. Mr. Chairman, just, this is only a recommendation to town meeting.
Correct.
This is nothing, we're not, we're not passing any.
Nope. As Attorney Henry said, could be a great deal of discussion on the floor at town meeting. All right. So is there anything further on tonight's agenda? I don't believe so. Or is there any other planning business?
Yeah, so under other business, we actually discussed this previously in the course of the public hearing. I feel like a vote on this would probably be helpful, but may not be necessary. We discussed in the kennel article that was submitted, there's some errors in the table of uses. This used a use table that didn't include the update from the Space Center, which was, as you know, a citizen petition article that was approved. When the kennel article was originally drafted, that didn't exist. So between then and now, it was an oversight on staff's part to update and make sure the use table had that reflected. So I'd like to float out to you similar amendment for, for town meeting to be addressed potentially in a motion that would just correct that to include the most recent version of the use table. None of, none of the uses, the vast majority of the districts are changed here. What it does is it retitles the PM VUD, which is now Life Sciences Development District, and adds the North Space Center M U O D. It does create uses for the kennels that are consistent with the other kind of similar districts. So for example, it assigns the, you know, the personal kennel use that was created by law is only allowed in the residential districts and not in the commercial districts. And so I recommend it and, you know, to be consistent with what you've already decided on the, for commercial kennels, you know, same thing. If you would like to take a position on that, you certainly can. If you don't feel comfortable taking a position on it, the department can discuss it for, you know, on the floor at town meeting, considering these changes.
Any comments, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a recommendation for approval of the changes to the use table.
Any other discussion from the board?
I think you got a.
Oh, that's a motion?
To accept the changes and I think we have a, we have a.
Is this a change in which bylaw?
The kennel bylaw.
And is it changing uses in the Space Center district?
The Space Center district wasn't included.
Wasn't included as a.
When this was submitted to the town meet, to town meeting warrant.
There was no Space Center district at that time.
Sure there was.
Well.
We've had ones.
This kennel article was drafted last year. It was drafted last year and advertised and kind of killed and pulled off at the last minute. So when we drafted this, we used how it, how it was written at the time, but failed to update to include the Space Center.
But you're now proposing to change the district that wasn't.
Right.
No, 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 no. It's not changing, it's to include.
Yes, to include it.
The, the table that was not included before.
Okay. So let me ask this, just so I understand, because my client will be asking me when he hears about it. The column you have here, NSCMUOD, is, is there any change in that from?
The only change.
The treatment of Sec 9, for example, commercial kennel, animal or veterinary hospital, from what was there previously?
No. The only change is the addition of personal kennel as a use, which we're proposing as a new use with this article. There's no changes to the bylaw as it's currently written, other than the insertion of a use for personal kennels and then the rewording of the commercial use.
So Sarah, may I ask?
Yeah.
So.
Put this on the screen for you, Debbie.
Debbie, do you have a copy of it? No.
No. So if, if we're adding the Space Center for personal use for a kennel, does that mean the Space Center or the new apartments?
What we're doing is adding the use category, but what is selected in the, in the table here is no. So under this, personal kennels would not be allowed in the NSCMUOD.
Were our commercial kennels, animal or veterinary hospital presently allowed in the?
No.
Space Center?
No. That's not a change.
Does the Space Center include everything on that piece of land? Oh, thank you.
That district is the entire.
The district covers, the district covers the entire Space Center property. So I, I just, so if I were to pick up and, Mr. Chairman, one night I didn't bring the bylaw with me. So, so it happens when I, yeah.
Like you.
Just so I can tell the client I've looked at this.
In the personal kennels, the selection of N for the NSCMUOD is consistent with the board's application of that to all of the other districts in which personal kennels are allowed by special permit, by the ZBA in the residential districts, but not in anything else.
So B A B A. So just the red is what you change, is that correct?
The green. The green is the new information on the end.
Green is new information and the red is the proposed.
Is what's already been proposed.
It, it won't move on my screen. Could you move it for me?
You got it. Can you see that?
Uh, yeah, little bit more.
Okay.
There we go, perfect, thank you. We still like that green, maybe that's, the light black is green, right?
Yeah, so it's, it's right here.
The last two columns.
The last two columns.
Yep.
Got it.
So actually, you're proposing to prohibit commercial kennels, boarding, training kennel, commercial breeding in several districts where that was not?
Yes.
A use at all.
That's already on the warrant. Correct. And those, those were already the subject of our public hearing. What we're discussing tonight is exclusively for the last two columns on the end.
Okay. From the point of view of the Space Center, I don't, I don't see any changes from what's already in the bylaw, except for the, I mean, what affects everybody is that it's an expansion by adding boarding slash training kennel and commercial breeding.
That was already there. That's already there.
It's 9B, it's a 9B personal kennel.
And the language at 9A is new too.
No.
Why is it in red?
Because that's what's already been proposed on the warrant. Changes below are depicted in red.
I'm saying new from what the bylaw presently provides.
Right, but that's all already been.
Hold on.
What I'm discussing with the board tonight is a further error that I identified that I'd like to recommend be part of, you know.
The final motion.
The final motion.
Yeah.
Which is correcting that lesson. And that's all.
I just wanted to see it, so I appreciate that.
So that's my, I make a motion that we accept the change.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion is second, so motion on the floor.
Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Heskey, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Ernie Petchakovsky, aye.
Are we voting for the whole motion?
Just the change, Debbie.
Okay. So it's the change to the Space Center and what else? The owl does not like me tonight. The Space Center and where?
The Life Sciences Development District.
And we don't have to ask them or anything, correct?
No.
Okay. All right. Debbie Homewood, yes.
Okay.
The agenda only has one other item and that's approval of minutes. At this time, I request that you delay a vote on those minutes.
Okay.
I've reviewed them and identified, you know, a series of changes that need to be made, so I'd like to have some more time to.
Do we have to take a vote to not?
Yeah.
Okay.
You just decline to take them up at this time.
So is anybody considering making a motion to adjourn?
Still moved?
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Heskey, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Ernie Petchakovsky, aye.
Debbie Homewood, yes. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Good night.
Thank you all. You're welcome.